Yes.
Okay, well, let's start. I'll, I'll begin by, by reading the governor's announcement about how we're, what's going on. Following the governor's restrictions on public meetings, this meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation. Public may access it following the instructions on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real time access, the public can request the recording of this meeting by contacting clerk. All right. So I'll, I'll ask now for, for public comment about, about any topic that's not, not on the meeting agenda. Does, does anybody want to say something on that? Okay, well, let's go to, let's go to the minutes of, of six, one. Jeff, I'm sorry.
Often what we do in the public comment is we will let people speak, even if it's on an agenda item, if they have to, if they have to leave the meeting and can't stay for as long and wait until the agenda item, we let them say their piece and then leave if that's what they need to do.
Certainly, let's do that. I mean.
We, we did discuss Jeff not doing it on the amendment topics though, because that's for later.
Well, okay. It was, it was a convenience, it was a convenience to people who needed to make a short statement and couldn't hang around until eight o'clock or eight thirty or so.
Yeah, but I think legally you really can't have them commenting on the hearing.
Okay. All right. But if there's another agenda item that's not a hearing, that they could do that if they wished. I don't know if that's the case, but.
Well, I'm not, I'm not aware of anybody wishing to speak and suggest we just go to the minutes of six, one.
Okay. I'll move to approve the minutes of June 1st, 2020.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? I'll, I'll call the roll. I'll, I'll start with the pictures as they are on my screen. Michael?
Aye.
Linda? We can't hear you, Linda. Okay. Your, your lips are, say you're, you're approving. Okay. Jeff?
Lacy, aye.
Robert?
I better abstain. I left the meeting early.
Okay, and, and I'll vote aye. And Jim's not here.
You forgot me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your picture isn't showing on my screen.
Well, it should say Steve, but yes, I say aye.
Doesn't. Okay. Okay, so that, that's the entire role. It's approved. And special, let's go on to special permit fees.
Okay, I think that might, that might be my thing. I've done a little research on it. And when I asked my colleagues around the state, you know, and a handful, six or eight, 10 responded, you know, what kind of special permits these they charge for, you know, the large scale solar projects? I got answers between $500 and $1,000. So I suggest that we look in between those, in that range for a potential amount to peg it at. And that if we can, we discuss it and, and vote on it and finalize it tonight if, if we can. I know the, the, was it the advertising? Hold on. I, I got a little report from, from Linda. She did the best she could on short notice, which is always better than you'd expect. And I guess the, the legal notice for the cell tower was $422, and that was only a 20 acre property. So these are fairly large amounts of money. You know, we have mailings that we have to send out to every butter with, with postage, and then we have to put it in the newspaper as well. And one thing we also need to consider is how much of Linda's time goes into this. There's a lot of extensive minute taking and file keeping that Linda does for projects like this, you know, far more, far in excess of other projects. So I, I guess I would recommend something on the order of 750.
Can I clarify just our process? That, what I think we talked about last time was the preferred solution that the planning board liked was coming up with a schedule, but we wanted to take more time to consider that. So we're just focusing in on fees related to solar installations. Is that correct for tonight? And then we can revisit the full schedule later?
Correct. It would just be setting a fee for the, the major ground mounted solar facilities.
Okay.
What were the fees previously?
Fees are $200 now for special permit.
Yeah.
And what was the median for the other places you checked?
Oh God, I, I didn't do statistics like that. I, I just, you know, I, I looked and the range was 500 to 1,000.
Okay, okay.
And, and, and we're legally all right on, on having a $200 permit fee for everything else and a 750 for solar? Is that, is, I mean, it seems like that's picking out solar.
Well, solar is a lot different than any other special permit we do. Much larger, much more acreage.
Well, I understand that.
And, and likely to have many more butters, much more time and effort on, on Linda's part. And the towns that I, that I talked with didn't charge 500 to 1,000 for all special permits. They had, they had established these fees for this specific type of project.
I, it, I mean, Lynn, I'm, Don is on the call, so I'm, or at least she, there you are. Yes, she is. But I mean, my sense is from the last conversation that if we're acknowledging, because the conversation last time started out with Jeff saying we should base the fee on a butters, and then we had another conversation that said it shouldn't be about a butters, about complexity of the project. And so if we acknowledge that that's the direction we're going to, and we basically want to tag fees related to complexity, so it's a butters, it's staff time, it's mailings, it's, you know, onsite visits, whatever all that stuff is, that this is just the first step in that direction, and that any revisiting of the $200 ones, they'll get revisited based on that complex, that complexity factor. So it feels to me like we're taking a first step in acknowledging that that's the framing we want to do, and then we can catch up with it, you know, in the summer or the fall, depending upon the timeframe.
Did you want to say something, Donna?
Sure. The, the whole issue around fees is that they have to reasonably reflect the cost to the town. And Michael and Jeff are exactly right, that the more complex the project is, whether it be number of butters, whether it be Linda's time, whether it be advertising, then basically as long as the fee can reasonably reflect the cost to the community, then the fee is legitimate. And they don't have to be the same for every special permit. A special permit to put a deck on a house because it's a non-conforming structure is a very different process and very different costs into the process than for a solar project. So you need to take into consideration that you do have consulting fees, the consulting fee language. So you really can't include engineers and other things like that, that you're going to charge outside of the filing fee essentially. But legal, I spend a lot more time with you on bigger projects, so your legal fees are a lot higher, Linda's fees, expenses are a lot higher. So yeah, I think you're fine in having a variety of fees as long as you can reasonably explain them.
I mean, well, my guess is that on the solar, your fees far outweigh the other costs.
Far outweigh.
I, I guess, Jeff, I appreciate your suggestion. I would say if it's, if you've heard back of the range of five to 1,000, given that our expenses are in excess of 1,000, I don't think putting 1,000 is going to discourage anyone who wants to do a development. And if it means recouping another $250 for the town, it seems like there, there's no downside to that.
I would agree.
I mean, it's hard for me to imagine that we would do a solar project that, that wouldn't be more than, that wouldn't be way more than $1,000 if, you know, we're going to be, we're going to have, we're going to have serious legal fees. So should, should we make a motion to go to $1,000?
I'll make that motion to go to $1,000.
I can do it.
Does Robert?
Yes.
And can we just clarify? The motion is specifically for special permits for large scale ground mounted solar?
Well, does it have to be specific to that, or it could be for complex projects?
No.
You're going to have to be more def- definitive than complex projects.
Right. They have to, they have to come in under that section of the bylaw, under that definition.
Yeah.
You know, we have other types of solar projects that could be quite small and not nearly as complicated, you know, the small ones. So this would be the large ones, and any serious solar project that is, is going to be a large one. It's going to be, they're going to go for 15 acres at least.
And if we, if we have the subsequent conversation about schedule, then we can sort of take this complexity factor in, you know, whether it's a cell tower or something like that, and come up with the full schedule.
Right. And you can use, you know, projects under 2,000 square feet, projects, you know, under 5,000 square feet, you know, kind of thing to deal with structures, and then you can use an acreage. I mean, you know, you can really broaden it out to really reflect the different size of the, and complexity of the projects. Subdivisions are usually much more expensive than, you know, other projects, that kind of thing.
Certain type of marijuana businesses might deserve their own schedule fees.
Exactly.
So, so are we clear on just what motion we're, we're, we're putting forward? I mean, do we, I mean, do we have a motion that Linda can write down?
Steve, do you want to reiterate it?
Yeah, I make the motion then based on what's said, that we establish the fee of $1,000 for solar projects, solar farms.
Large.
Large scale, ground mounted.
Large scale. Yeah, large, large ground mounted.
Yeah, I, I don't know how you quantify or qualify, quantify large though, but.
Well, it's, that's what the terminology is in the, in the zoning.
Defined by law.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It, here's the exact wording, large scale, ground mounted, solar electric installation.
Okay, so I make a motion to put the fee up to $1,000 for large scale, ground mounted solar installations.
Second.
Okay, well, okay, good, good. So any more discussion? I'll call the roll. Michael?
Take care. Aye.
Jeff?
Lacy, aye.
Linda? Okay, I'm, I'm reading your lips as aye. Robert?
Aye.
Okay, Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Deacon, just a housekeeping item. Linda, I think, I know why I can't see the gallery view is because I, I didn't, I don't have Zoom downloaded on my laptop. I'm looking at it through my browser, so I'm suspecting that's the issue.
Oh.
But I don't think I should change it right now.
Okay.
Heads up.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Deacon. I'm sorry.
Well, let's go to the proposed amendments. I know there's, I know there's some new language that, that needs to be dealt with.
Are we, are we okay to start dealing with that before?
What time did you say the public hearing was?
7:30. Okay, so we should not do that until, until the hearing.
Well, can I ask Donna a question about that?
Please, please.
So, so Donna, we already voted and approved and sent to the select board the prior language. So with the new language for, for that one section that you and Jeff have been discussing, does that require a sec, a new vote by the planning board, in which case we would do it in this part of the meeting before the hearing?
Um, I think the problem with doing that, Michael, is that I think that it would be great to have an explanation in the hearing about the change. And so I think that you're going to end, you're going to end up having a discussion about why you're changing it, and then that's just going to be repeated.
Okay. As long as we do the process disclosure, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. No, I, there's not, there's, there's, there's not a process requirement here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, if we're not going to discuss, if we're not going to discuss the amendments, let's, let's move on to the, to the details of preparing for the town meeting. What we have to do for, how we're going to present things and, and what, what materials are going to be applied in, in what way? I mean, you were.
Jeff, I did get an, Jeff, I did get an answer to our earlier question. The proposed bylaws are printed in the warrant pursuant to the DPH guidance on town meetings. You want to have as few handouts as possible. So the current version of the proposed amendments are in the warrant. So any substantive or extensive change will need to be an amendment from the floor.
Okay.
Donna, do you have any, I'm assuming you've been to town meetings so far this season, is that right?
Yes.
So do you have any best practices for sharing language? Because I'm assuming people likely won't have brought printouts or memorized this stuff, and it's hard to absorb. So is there a better way to present some of these things?
Well, the, the war, the zoning bylaw amendments will be in the warrant, fully laid out in the warrant. You're clearly going to want to have a short handout on diff changed language that we can discuss later.
Okay.
I think the other thing that is really important, and then we found out at well attended, outside town meetings, even if you get a card, like to hold up to show how you're voting, it is very, very difficult to count people sitting outside spaced the way they're spaced accurately. And given that these are two thirds votes, and will probably need to be counted, they won't be, may very well not be unanimous. It's really a discussion with the moderator and the town clerk about having two counters for each section, having the counters count together rather than counting individually, like they, you know, usually do they count individually and then come together and see if they agree on the number? That just did not work. And orange, they didn't agree on the number. It was just too difficult to count people just standing or holding up their hands when there were, at orange, there were three, over 300 people at the town meeting. So I think just having a conversation with the moderator and/or the town clerk about when it gets to these articles, if it's not unanimous, or the moderator, do you have a bylaw jet, or anybody know if there's a, they adopted where you can declare a two thirds at town meeting, or do they have to count?
That might be one for our former moderator.
I saw Penny's picture on the screen earlier.
Yeah, unmuting.
Hi Penny.
We don't have it on the books, but you can ask for it at the beginning of the meeting to allow the moderator to make that declaration.
That's, that's, Penny's absolutely right. Normally, there's a statute you can just adopt at a town meeting, and it can, will be forever the rule. But if in fact the moderator wants to get the group to vote at the beginning of the town meeting to allow a declaration of a two thirds vote rather than counting, then that, that in fact can happen. And so you wouldn't have to count. So in other words, you've got 200 people, the moderator, the questions called, the moderator asks those in favor, and it's very clear that 150, 160 people vote yes. You have two or three noes, then the moderator could declare that a two thirds if this vote was taken. So I think a little discussion at the beginning of the town meeting to go over those rules makes sense. But I'm betting that at least one or two of these amendments are going to have to be counted. And so I think the other discussion to have with the moderator and the town clerk is to have two counters for each section, those counters count together rather than separately, and that as they count each individual, that individual sits down. They basically point to them, they sit down. It's the only way to get an accurate count if there's a lot of people outside sort of milling around to get this vote.
Thank you.
So does that apply to both a voice vote and a card holding vote?
No, it applies to, not a voice vote. Voice votes are, you know, I mean, for the most part, the moderator's just going to say whether it's, whether it's done or not. But if it's a close vote, the moderator doesn't want to call, and they have to count either people holding their hands up or standing, that's when it applies.
Okay.
So.
So then you're back to whether you're going to, how you're going to hand out the amendment if it's approved tonight, the change that Jeff, Michael, and I have been working on. You know, are you, how are you going to make that available at the meeting? And then you all can talk about your presentation.
So, so my understanding is that, is that, is that Jeff and Michael, between them, are going to present the amendments?
Yes, I think, just like we did with the select board, I think we were planning on replicating that process, Jeff?
Yeah, you principally on the signs, me principally on the open space design, and then we'll tag team it on the solar.
Right.
Sound good?
And I'm assuming, I'm assuming that we're going to, even though it's outside, we'll have a, a mic set up and we'll be in front, just like usual? I mean, sort of usual?
You're going to have to check with Becky about that. I know that at some of the other town meetings, they had mic covers to go on as each person talked. And if the person was going to talk again, they took the cover with them. And if they were only anticipating speaking once, it got thrown away. So, but I, I think you have to anticipate that access to the mic is going to be different.
Okay. Can we unmute Becky? Or can Becky unmute herself?
I did it myself.
Yay.
Hi Becky.
Hi. I can't do the video one. There will be mics available in the front, but we're, that's been a changing discussion on how the audience will be. We were going to do booms, but I think we, we've switched to the mic covers that Orange told us about. And as far as presenters go, for you and Jeff, you'll, you know, we'll make sure you each have a microphone and covers and up at the front. So it'll be like a normal presentation.
Okay, great.
Becky, you're going to have one select board member read all the articles?
No, we share every, so it'll, all three will be reading different articles, but.
They'll each have their own mic?
Yep. Well, they'll, yeah. They'll have a cover, so if they're passing the mic, they'll each use their own cover.
What about the, and the finance committee, same thing?
Yep. Because we'll only have one mic on each table, because we're a little bit more limited than when we're at the school.
Do you see my hand in the air?
No, but I, if you raise your hand, I can see your hand on the participant list for Zoom. So go ahead.
I would question the, I don't know, probability of having handouts, and I would suggest you check with Kat, and there, the whole board of health trying to figure out what can and what cannot be present from hand to hand.
I can tell you what we have so far established. We are asking everyone to bring their, what they printed out at home. Everything's a bit, the full warrant is about 30 pages, and we're asking people to print it out. And we can add the amendment that you have written to have available right below the warrant, and ask people to also print that out. And we'll have a small number of packets, prepackaged a few days ahead in envelopes with a warrant and budget, and we can insert that there for the few that don't bring their own packets. But we're really encouraging people to bring their own to reduce the amount of touching.
Thank you.
And is Becky, is that on the town website?
Yes, the, the full warrant, the 28 pages is now, it has been on the website since, I think, Friday. And it's, it's available, it's actually on the select board page, but there's a link to the homepage. It says annual town meeting document, information, you press there, it goes to the select board page. There's a listing and all the materials are available to the public there.
Great.
And Jeff? Jeff?
Is there a way for folks who, who can't do that with a computer to latch on to a, a warrant ahead of the town meeting?
We are, we had hoped to mail them out in advance, but I have just finished printing for the 60, 70 people we know, and I will have them available on town. And I will have them available on town hall on Wednesday. And if they're not picked up on Thursday, we will deliver. Thursday, I'm promising by Friday, hopefully we can deliver by on Thursday.
Wow. Do you have a list of people that have either you know, need them or have requested?
We have a list of the people that have not are not currently subscribed to shootsberry.net.
Okay.
Anybody who is not hooked up to shootsberry.net is on the list and they received their newsletter in print. When we emailed out the link to everyone else. Because of, we have the shortage of manpower available to us because of COVID-19. There's no folding parties.
Deacon, can I ask a quick question? Becky, can you just speak to the, the discussion that select board had in terms of the order for the zoning bylaw? So that solar is number 15, signs is 29 and open spaces 30. And at least the last time the select board discussed it that I was aware of. The idea was depending upon how long the meeting went, the moderator might cut things off before the end of the meeting. Just so like the whole planning board is aware of whatever the new status is or the current status.
Okay, so the order of the current is completely reordered in the last couple of weeks. And the goal is to get through all the budget articles. The practical consent, we're hoping to use a consent form motion to do about five. Three different groups, get rid of 10 articles more quickly that are routine business. Non controversial. We've moved the solar amendment up higher, it's number 15. At a minimum, we hope to get through till number 22. I think it is or 25, then there's about nine more articles. That if we are either stormed out with an electrical storm. Or whatever else might make the meeting need to close for that day and be continued on to Monday night. We're trying to make sure that the solar bylaw is captured in the first group.
Thank you.
What, what again are the order of the next two zoning articles?
I believe you mean the zoning ones, the signs and I believe they're 20.
I just looked it up. Sign is 29 and open space is 30.
30, yeah, 29 and 30.
My clock says 7:30 now. I'm. It's two minutes behind. Okay. Well, as ever. So. My thought, I mean, are we ready to start the public hearing? I mean, do, do anybody want to do this anymore? Okay, let, let's start the public hearing. I'll read the governor's announcement again for, for those people who, who weren't here the first time. Following the governor's restrictions on public meetings, this meeting is being held. This, this hearing is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation. Public may access it following the instructions on the meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real time access. The public can request a recording of the meeting by contacting clerk. I'm thinking we. I'm thinking to dispense with the, the usual reading of the notice of, of hearing. If anybody'd like to hear me go through it, I'll, I'll be happy to do it. So shall we go to the, to propose sign by law first?
Sure, I think we started, we could do that if you want.
Well, it's, 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 it's the order that it's listed in the public hearing notice.
Well, then we should do it that way for sure. Deacon, do you have a preference for how to proceed?
No, I, I mean, I'm thinking maybe you should just describe briefly. What's there and, and, and then we'll take, and then we'll get responses from the public.
Sure, that sounds good. So I actually did a little research since our last meeting, I asked Susie for historic information. And at least what she had the records of for sign bylaws start in 1965. The last changes that I could find were 2008, which coincides with, I think, the big changes. So I, let me just share my screen because I have, oh, I can't. Linda, can you give me sharing access? Um. It's under settings, I believe.
Gosh, you should be able to.
Linda, if you make him a co-host.
Okay. Okay, all right, let's, let's do that. Well, I'll just have to, wait a minute. If I make him the host and that takes Steve out.
Can you have more than one co-host?
Yes, I've had multiple, I've had two and three co-hosts.
Okay, so all right, so we'll make him a host. And Steve's still the co-host, so perfect, okay.
Great, okay, so let me find. To, 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 to. I just have to. Find the file that I was have here. Okay. So can you guys see this?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the document that I created. That we discussed last time at the planning board meeting. And this is currently on the planning board website along with the proposed amendments. So it walks through what the major changes are, and I guess I'll just do that and then we can go from there. So the first issue is grandfathering of all current signs. So if there's a sign that's non-compliant. The current bylaw has no allowances for anything that was non-compliant and erected after 2008. So any non-compliant sign from the last 12 years. Is not complying with the bylaws as such. On the proposed one would change that so that anything that's erected up until town meeting in 2020. If it was not compliant, it would be grandfathered in, so that would capture 12 years of signs. That's the first change. Currently for commercial signs. It requires a special permit unless it's agricultural or horticultural. And the proposed one would change it so it's commercial signs are allowed by right. So more generous in that regard. Signs on premises, this is a big change where the current bylaws. There's no signs that are allowed off the premises. The proposed bylaw would allow signs off the premises with approval of the other landowner. Also another significant change in the more expansive direction. In terms of signs on town land, there's currently no language regarding signs on town property. And this bylaw would create regulations that specify when and how signs can be on town property. Again, there's no, there's no mention of it in the current bylaws. In terms of. Paul is trying to get in, let me admit Paul. In terms of temporary signs. Kurt, there's a whole category of temporary signs, and this is related to the Supreme Court ruling on 2015 Reed versus Town of Gilbert. And our current bylaw has temporary signs for construction, lease or sales. So you know, those kind of things that people put up in front of houses. The whole temporary sign category was the main topic of, of issue in terms of the Supreme Court ruling. What we did with the recommended bylaws was eliminate the temporary sign category. And we expanded the allowed usage. So the main issue is, I understood it with Supreme Court is that you can't treat temporary sign uses differently. By not having a temporary sign category and by having more expanded uses. It seems like we're both in compliance and we're also just, we're more informative in how people can use signs. In terms of town size, there's, we tried to create more consistency. Two things that are worth noting is accessory use was limited to four square feet. It will now be eight and for retail consumer commercial space, it was 20, it'll go to 24 square feet. Sign illumination. There's no limit in terms of the time of day restricted for illuminated signs. And the proposal would not allow illuminated signs past 8:00 PM. And the, let's see, then the last two are distance from the road. There's currently no language regarding distance from the road for any signs. And after lots of discussion and consultation with the highway department. What we came up with is that the proposed one would require five feet setback from the traveled way, which generally speaking. If it's paved and there's a white line, it'd be five feet from that. If it's a dirt road, it'd be five feet from where the tires of the car travel. And then lastly, in terms regarding safety. There's no language regarding safety in relation to a sign location. And then the proposed one, it limits sign location to maintain safety. So it's if a sign is deemed not to be safe for. Either bikes or cars. There's a ability to determine that. So those are the highlights, I can't share the whole bylaw, but that's three, three pages. I think that's less productive, so maybe I just open it up. Or Beacon, Deacon, you and Steve can, I guess, take it from here.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes. I, I just had a quick comment, one of the, one of the most significant changes from, from my perspective is. That currently any sign needs to be on the premises. There are no setbacks for signs, but they need to be on the premises. And very often our road rights of way extend five, 10 or more feet out from the road. So according to our current sign by law, the signs need to be out that far and out of the right of way. And there's a tremendous compliance problem in shootsberry. It's not a sign problem, but there's a sign compliance problem because most of the signs in order to be seen. Are much closer to the road than that. So this bylaw liberalizes that and makes it more realistic. By simply saying the signs can be in the town road right of way, but they need to be five feet off the road. To be safe and out of the way. So that's going to, that's going to be a benefit to people who have existing signs and it'll bring them into compliance. Most of the signs on Baker Road don't meet the current sign regulations, but the most of them will meet this.
I don't see anybody wishing to comment. Steve, does, is, is anybody trying to say anything about?
No hands are up.
Merrill has hers.
I had a couple of questions. The grandfathering of signs from the last 12 years. Why would we want to allow those in? There was a valid sign regulation 12 years ago. Why would we change it now and allow those to come in? I think if they were not valid then, they shouldn't be valid now and they should come into conformance. That was my first question. Do you have a response to that?
Um, I'd be open to other people's opinions. I think our general sense was. You know, somewhat to Jeff's point, you know, one of the things we first looked at was how far most of the signs are from the road now. And so as Jeff said, you know, if you set it back the, according to the, the current bylaws, they're usually, they would have to be in the woods. On a lot of properties, meaning they wouldn't be seen. And so, yes, people made an intentional decision to sort of make them closer so they could be seen, but. It wasn't necessarily, it wasn't an exploitative kind of thing, it was just sort of a common sense. Why would you put a sign in the woods that no one can see it? So I think that's where our starting point was.
Location is only one of a non, one of the.
Right.
Form reasons. It could be that the sign was too big, it was illuminated all night, who knows? And I would have the signs be in conformance of what the rules are.
Right, well, I guess that's where I was going next is I, we didn't come up in our conversations, but. It, it didn't seem like there was. Examples of that kind of non-compliance that was egregious that we were aware of. Someone might be aware of one, but I wasn't at least.
So, so if the only, you know, why don't you just make it a very narrow focus then and say signs that were in non-compliance. Due to the location requirement are grandfathered in. Because there may be others that are non-compliance that are really offensive. Just a thought.
Yeah, that's a good point.
The other question I had was, I'd like to know more about what the rules are for town property. What, what signs can be put on town property? Because I've always wondered, like, there are political signs definitely on town property and there's, there's lots of different things. So what does that section say?
I will read it for you.
Thank you.
Let me just get there. Two, 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 two. Okay, so it's under 8.4-5, which is sign restrictions. And it's only a couple of sentences, so I'll just read it. Signs on town property. Only municipal signs except permitted signs located between the lot of privately owned premises in the five feet or traveled lanes. Of a public roadway, the, which was what Jeff was referring to. May be placed upon town owned property, including the town common, frontage bordering town buildings, parks, recreation, conservation or watershed areas. Municipal sign shall require approval of the select board or its designate. So if basically for anything that's town property, it has to be a municipal sign and it has to be approved by the select board. And right now there's no language regarding that at all.
So will the town then, you through the police department or highway department or whomever? Remove all of the signs that don't fit that definition? Cause I would guess that most of them haven't gotten select board approval. Now, this is just, it's not, we haven't passed this by law yet, so.
Well, that would get to the last section, which is 8.4-7, which is enforcement. And we did address that, so I'll just read that one to you. Signs erected on town property not in compliance with 8.4-5, what I just read. May be removed without notice by the select board or its designate. If known, the owner of the sign shall be contacted within 48 hours. The sign shall be stored for a period of two weeks to allow the owner to retrieve the sign. At which time the select board or its designate may dispose of the sign. And what's worth noting is that for all enforcement for signs that are on non-town property. The, the enforcers, the, the building inspector, and it's consistent with the rest of the zoning bylaw. But for on-town property, it's a, it's a different enforcement method. But the idea is that they can, they can be removed. If they're not supposed to be there.
That sounds really reasonable if that's done.
Donna, was that you?
Yeah, Michael, how does that square with the grandfathering?
That's a good one, Donna.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll have to put an amendment on the floor, for a sort of to Merrill's point. Because I, between now and Saturday, if someone stuck something in the town common. We wouldn't want it to remain there because it was grandfathered, so that's a very good.
No, I think you might have to amend that to say that on, that there are all, any signs on private property are grandfathered.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. That's why we pay you the big bucks.
That. How does that square with, with people, with people putting signs in the actual layout of the road? Which is town property? I mean, we were trying to enable that.
Good point, Deacon. Well, how?
Those become compliant. Let's be clear on the layout of the road. Most of the layouts of the road are easements, not fee ownership. So when you talk about the layout of the road, under almost all circumstances, that's an easement. And so it's not the town property within the right of way, but rather an easement for the town. And the five feet is for maintenance of the traveled way. So under almost all circumstances, that is private property with a town easement for the road.
Donna, that's, that's not been my experience with the road work that I've done in the town over the years. The right of way of most of those roads is registered, used to be in the county, and as Bill Randall researched, was wider in almost all case than the actual pavement width or gravel road width.
Yeah, no, it should be.
They weren't easements, they were actually the town right of way.
Right, but the town right of way is an easement.
That's the first time I've ever heard that, that's interesting.
Unless the town took it in fee, it's an easement. So if the town lays out a road over somebody's property, that's an easement unless they take it in fee.
Except these roads, I think, were, were registered in, you know, wherever it was, when, when the roads were first designed, they were, you know, six rods wide or whatever it was. And registered as that width in the county. And you're saying that that is not truly the width of the road?
No, it is the width of the road, but the road itself is an easement, not ownership by the town.
So I think when we started this conversation, we got into this and it's really confusing. And I know from my personal experience researching Pratt Corner, it's going back to the historical records, it's really unclear. And unless you have lots of money to pay someone to research it, it basically remains unknown. So I think aside from the point that Donna raised, the, you know, the whole distance from the road thing, we sort of worked, it, it seemed like we worked it out in a reasonable way. So what I'm wondering is if we were to get to the grandfathering per Merrill's original suggestion, where we sort of narrow it to signs that are grandfathered for the, from the distance of the road, that would then preclude anything that was on town-owned land that was on the common, for example, because it's not a distance from the road issue, it's just plop down on the common. So Donna, it seems like it would get to your point, which is a good one, but it would keep us out of the quagmire of how a road was obtained and therefore what the side of the road, who owns the side of the road, which ultimately is a mystery.
Tell me what it would say again, Michael.
Um, I think, I have to find the wording, but the, the idea would be that the grandfathering prior to 2020 would only be for signs that were non-compliant because of distance from the road or the traveled way. So anything else that was non-compliant would still be non-compliant.
Yeah, but I, I'm, I don't know. What if it's, what if it's on the town common and five, over five feet from the traveled way?
I'll go pull it out. I don't know.
How about if you say town-owned land outside of the right of way?
Okay.
But that would leave any? Yeah, so if you exclude signs, and everybody help brainstorm this. If you exclude signs from the grandfathering that are on town land outside of the right of way, then that would still leave signs in the right of way on town-owned land as grandfathered.
That doesn't address your most recent example, though.
No, that's my concern.
Yeah. I, I mean, we could just, one could identify a specific town or land that is not grandfathered, just out of convenience. So you could say the town common in front of town buildings. Because there's a difference between town-owned buildings and the common versus the right of way on some road. So if we were very specific in this instance, that would, you wouldn't mush them together. I can, I mean, I can work on this language, so it makes sense if people think that concept makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, you could say occupied for town use other than roadways, something like that.
Huh.
I think that's cleaner.
Yeah, I like that.
So that would have to be an amendment at the town meeting.
Right.
Right.
What we're trying to do is, is leave the roadside private signs alone, even if they don't necessarily meet the five feet now. And then all future signs along the road would meet the five feet. And we, and any signs that were reconstructed or fell down and were put back up would all be adjusted back to the five feet. So slowly but surely, we get compliance with that, with that five feet. And that would be our objective along the roads.
So if I worked on an amendment and sent, shared it with Donna, is, would that be okay? And then I could just, when it passes muster, share it with Deacon and offer it as an amendment from the floor?
Yeah, excuse me for a second. Becky had her hand up, and Becky, did you want to say something?
Um, I was just, I just had a quick question. Is your objective to keep temporary signs off the common?
Well, we're getting rid of the entire category of temporary signs. So maybe if you want to ask your question differently, that would might be better.
Well, are you allowing temporary signs in a new category, a different category?
We're, the idea would be to only have municipal signs on town property. That's not roadway related. So that.
I thought earlier discussions included the constitution and freedom of speech. It was kind of the backbone of allowing temporary signs on the common.
Yeah, but Becky, I think what they did with that, just to clarify, because I know where you're going with this. Basically, the, the categories, they, instead of calling them temporary signs, because there's a problem with that terminology, they've now made categories like political signs, real estate signs, so that rather than calling them temporary, those signs are basically permitted under another section of the, under another definition now.
Okay, thank you.
We expanded, thank you, Donna.
Next question. So could I put my Lea Women Voters' vote is important on the common? It's only up for a couple of weeks.
You, you couldn't do it. If the select board thought that it was important to make sure that people voted, the select board could decide to put a sign that says vote. But an individual couldn't.
Okay, I'd be putting it up for a group, an accepted group.
Well, if we put up a Confederate flag on the common, someone could say that that's putting it up for a group as well. There's sides of every perspective, so. The idea is that it's town-owned property, yeah.
Linda?
Yes, I just, we'd like to remind guests in particular to identify themselves before they speak, because not everyone will know who, who they are.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even seeing people who are speaking. They don't even show on my screen.
Right, we can't see everyone in the gallery because there's too many people present. So that's why we need to have people say their names.
The other thing I would ask is to use your raised hand symbol on, you know, on the participant list, so that you can be acknowledged, so we don't run into a traffic jam.
So just maybe to close this out, I suggested a, a possible process where I could work on an amendment that gets to Donna's point and share that language with her. And once she's okay with it, I could share it with Deacon as the chair, with the goal of offering an amendment on the floor that captures this point. Does that work for the board?
I think, I think that's, I, I think that's fine. People can decide if they like what you and Donna come up with or not.
Well, the, the select board does not, the planning board does not have to act on the proposed amendment right at the town meeting.
I think since it's an amendment from the floor, I mean, it seems like it wouldn't require action by the body. I mean, I could share it just informationally, so people know what it is. That seems like it's a, not only a courtesy, but a good point of sharing information. But we couldn't take action on it outside of a meeting.
Donna had her hand up.
I know, I'm sorry, I can't find my hand sign.
Well, I, I, you, you were appearing on my screen, other people aren't.
If we're done with the amendment, I just wanted to ask about, was, was there any limitation on permission to have a sign on someone else's property?
We didn't have anything written. It was just basically saying if you have permission.
So if I get permission from 18 people on my road to put up a sign, I could put up 18 signs?
Conceptually, yeah, I guess, if you're willing to spend the time and effort.
I don't know that it's an issue, but I just, you know, I guess if it becomes an issue, you can always amend it.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like, is that whole, people have the right to put stuff up on their property within the constraints of, you know, the other parts of the sign bylaw. And if everyone has an opinion, they want to do that on their property, it seems like it's possible. And we didn't have, we didn't say it had to be written or oral or, you know, at this point, it seems like just providing permission, since that was the change, was the key thing.
You'll know if it's a problem and you have to amend it.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, yeah. Does anybody want to say anything else about the sign bylaw?
Jeff? So for the purposes of the planning board acting, can we, can we make a motion and approve the motion as Michael suggested? That he developed the alternative language, get it approved by Donna, and, and, and we're going to accept what that is. And we're not going to need to look at it or, or, or approve it any further.
Well, we're not gonna, I mean, my understanding is we're not going to be accepting it. It'd be the, it'd be the, it'd be the citizenry.
Right, but I think it's, but Jeff's point is a good one. It'd be nice to sort of have the, the board agree that I should go forward with the action on behalf of the board.
Sure, sure.
So Donna, would you like to cut it?
Yeah. I mean, because it's an amendment from the floor, it's not, it's not you guys passing anything. You know, it's an amendment from the floor and you can vote against it if you want.
Okay.
Okay.
I move that we pursue that course of action with Michael generating some language and reviewing it with Donna and if necessary, bringing it as a floor amendment at town meeting.
Okay, are, are you, are you good with that? Are you good with writing that down, Linda?
I'd like Jeff to say again, please.
I, I would like, make a motion that we approve the course of action that has Michael drafting language to address the problems we've been discussing. Review it with Donna and develop a potential floor amendment for a town meeting for the sign bylaw.
Got it.
Yeah, okay. Second?
Robert seconds.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I'll call the roll. Michael?
Take care, aye.
Jeff?
Lacy, aye.
Linda?
Attendee, aye.
Okay, Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Robert isn't showing on my screen. Robert?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm an aye, I, I think I got everybody. Okay, so I think we should move on to the solar.
You can undo me as host, so Jeff can share the screen, Linda.
Okey dokey. Okay, I'm making Jeff host now. Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm just getting the document up here. I think it's this one. Make it a little bigger. There we go. Okay, hopefully this is the one that I've scribbled notes on in front of me here. So Michael and I are going to tag team this. I'm, I'm going to go until I start stammering and then Michael is going to take over. And we're going to alternate a bit. So what, what we've done is we put more thought into this since the WELOC project, the last, the first solar bylaw that we had, we passed pretty much amidst the WELOC project in, in fairly short order. But we've had more chances to think about it, reflect on a WELOC project. And we've designed a solar bylaw that, that has more mitigation built into it than the last one. And, and some limits on the overall amount of solar that can be proposed in Schutzbury over time. So I would, I would characterize it in general as, as stricter, but definitely not prohibiting solar, not unreasonably regulating it, but simply giving the town a little more authority to get the kinds of projects it wants and to deal with the impact. So I'll try to get through it pretty quickly. Everything in here that is in yellow has been changed in some way. We didn't leave it in track changes because that's just a horrible thing to try to read and make sense of. So I'll provide a little explanation for each of the yellow parts. First one is in the purpose. And this, this simply adds a section C that was suggested by the Conservation Commission that, that emphasizes the ecological benefits of our forest land, the sequestration of carbon, all the benefits of, of large blocks of open space and the protection of that, which is kind of central to what we're doing here. So a little, little bolstered purpose section. The next change is right down here. Can you folks see my cursor as it moves around?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, good. This is just a wording change suggested by Donna. It doesn't change anything, it just clarifies that it's a special permit requirement. It just needed to be there, so that's non-sustentative change. You know, if we get into the next section, 8.10-3, general requirements, now it gets a little more interesting. In the mitigation for loss of carbon sequestration in forest habitat, we currently have a four-to-one requirement. For every one acre of the solar installation, there needs to be four acres of forest for, for carbon sequestration. And previously, commercial forestry and tree cutting, fairly significant amounts were allowed in that, in, in those four acres. in, in, in those four acres or whatever they happen to be. But we felt, and after looking at the literature, that probably, um, the best sequestration would be just to leave it as it is. Except for some necessary cutting, um, if it's only going to be 25 years, you're probably better off with the forest that's there and leaving that grow. Um, and, and you'll get the most sequestration, that's really what the goal is. So we, we took out, uh, commercial forestry and tree cutting as a permitted activity in that area, um, unless it's related to the maintenance of the installation. Or in response to a natural occurrence, a blowdown, invasive species, diseases, things like that. Okay. The next one, uh, in, is in the mitigation for loss of forest habitat within the installation. And this really doesn't change it too much, we, we require, we require wild, um, wildflower meadow be planted, um, in and around the, um, the solar panels. And this language here was added, um, by one of our planning board members who is interested in creating, um, more ideal habitat for pollinators. And so this really gets into a little more detail about that, uh, wildflower meadow and what has to go into it and what kind of professional should be working on it and designing it as part of the, uh, part of the permit. So improved conditions for pollinators in the wildflower meadow. Okay. Michael, you took this one last time, you want to take this one again, the mitigation for disruption of historic resources and properties?
Sure, so, and Jeff, we might, uh, well, and I'll just speak to it. So there's more yellow here than is actual changes. A lot of this language stayed the same.
Right.
Some of the things, so it looks like we just rewrote the whole section, we didn't, so that's important just to sort of identify. One of the big changes is that we added, um, let's see, one, two, three, three lines down where it says Massachusetts registers historic places. That was the only thing that was there and we expanded it to also be defined by the National Historic Preservation Act, which includes other areas. The other thing that we talked about was requiring, um, a written assessment of the project's effects on each resource or property and importantly, ways to avoid, minimize, or mitigate adverse effects. So, um, the prior version really spoke to identifying, um, the properties, but nothing in regards to assessing how to avoid, minimize, or mitigate, which is really what we're trying to get at. It's one thing to say, there it is, the other thing is to sort of say, how do we keep it the way we, you know, it, it is? So that's essentially what we're trying to do in this one.
Yeah, and, and I recall that we added, we enumerated certain types of things that you're likely to find in the Chutesbury woods, such as cellar holes, arvesteads, stone corrals, mark graves, water wells, pre-Columbian features.
Yeah, those are all, those are all pre-existing from the current version.
Really, I, I, I don't recall them near, but
Yeah.
I'm sure you're, I'm sure you're right.
Yeah, up until the comma where it says pre-Columbian features, all of that's pre-existing.
Okay. All right. Here's one. This is, this is H and, 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 and this is one that, uh, Donna and Michael and I have been working on, um, quite a bit lately. Because admittedly, this H is not written in the most, um, felicitous manner. And we had thought about rewriting it. What, what it essentially says is construction access, which doesn't necessarily mean permanent long-term access, but it means construction access when you're building it, needs to be from paved town roads, not from our barely adequate for residential dirt roads, which, um, describe most of the dirt roads in town, but you need to find a paved road to access the project. In the alternative, uh, an applicant, um, might propose, um, one of two things. Either posting a bond to maintain and repair and fix up the, the dirt road, the impacts on the dirt road, during and after the, the project's construction, uh, or, um, fund the paving of what is necessary on that dirt road to get to the project. So then you would actually have a paved road to access your project. So this lays out those two types of things that could be proposed. I won't get into the details, but there, there are some problems with this, especially laying out all this detail about what can be proposed because it, it may not encompass all the things that, that one could, could propose. So we have rewritten this and, and let me call up the document and consolidated it. See if I can get this. Let's hold on.
Jeff, can I chime in while you're doing that?
Yeah, go right ahead, I'm fiddling around here.
Yeah, so I think one of the dynamics that we, the, the planning board tried to do and that with Donna's assistance, I think we've gotten better described is that, um, especially in an alternative where there might be paving of the road, what the planning board identified is that we as seven people, even though we're duly elected board, shouldn't be making that level of conversation without greater engagement with the town. And so the two stakeholder bodies are the highway department, um, both for, um, the cost and, you know, essentially the design features. And then with the select board in terms of being able to get a pulse or engage the town in that kind of consideration. And so as written, it's problematic, but the idea was that, um, trying to, um, reach out, if that was an alternative that the applicant wanted to go for, that it went, you know, that there was perspectives and endorsements or recommendations beyond, uh, the seven of us. And I think what Jeff will, will show with the language is that the planning board still will retain the special permit approval capacity, which is what our body does, but that we wanted to get endorsements from other bodies so that it was built into the process. If that was, in fact, a, an alternative that was being offered up. And Jeff, I talked a lot and you still didn't do it.
Oh, keep talking, Michael, figure something else to say.
Well.
I ha- I have it right here, where is it? There it is. Sorry, folks.
There you go.
Okay. Now I've got to make you guys go away, so I can see this thing. Okay, can everyone see this?
Yep.
We've consolidated that section H down to three sentences, which we think are fairly clear. And the first sentence is the same, vehicular access for the purpose of construction shall be from paved, either by tumulus or chip sealed town roads. Any, any proposed waiver to this section under 8.10-2C, which is our existing waiver section in, in this solar by law, shall be transmitted to the Chutesbury Highway Department and Select Board with 35 days allowed for comment. No such waiver request shall be approved by the planning board without written concurrence from the select board. What this means is that, um, if an applicant can't access from a paved road or doesn't wish to, they can propose a waiver, we have a general waiver in this by law, they can propose a waiver to that requirement under 8.10-2C. And the form of that waiver could be, um, well, this is just a short segment and the, the, the road is in great shape there, it doesn't really need paving, it might need a little bit of, 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 of work. You know, uh, our engineer says it's going to work out and could you grant us the waiver? Or the waiver could be, well, we're, you know, we'll, uh, we'll fix up the road, we'll, um, we'll put a new top coat on when it's done. Or even that, um, you know, this is a small segment of unpaved road and, uh, we propose, uh, funding the pavement of it. All in exchange for, for allowing access, um, to the site. So we don't know what kind of waiver will be proposed, but whatever it is, um, it'll have to do with roads. So it has to go to the highway department and the select board with time to comment, back to the planning board. And then before the planning board can approve such a waiver, um, we need written concurrence from our select board to do that. And that's where Donna and Michael and I ended up on this thing at the end of today. Now I'm trying to get you guys back.
I think everyone's still here.
I, I can hear you, I wanted to see you.
I think everyone's just speechless with that, that elegant distillation that you just, uh, on H here that we're looking at.
Well, it, it, it kind of went from gobbledygook to something that's quite straightforward.
Yeah, so I can speak to the next one while Jeff's trying to find it. So I, which is this, the section right after that, speaks to, um, the required frontage on a public way. And as I remember it, this was something that is true for any, any development in town, but Donna felt like we needed to actually say that. Said it was clear that the required frontage, um, was necessary as defined in the zoning by law. So that's, there's no real change there, it's more just an articulation of what is already, um, and making it explicit. The next section.
No one had any questions under the, about the new language?
I think we were waiting on Jeff.
You still with us, Jeff?
All right, am, am I sharing?
You are.
Okay, you can see my cursor moving around, okay. Oh, Michael, you, you did the next one about the road frontage?
Yeah, but Donna was thinking, maybe people had comments on H.
I have, there's a comment here, Susie Mosier.
Yep.
Do we want to, do, are these questions or comments?
I wanted to ask, um, with the new wording you have in H, is it still, um, a good idea to start the, start the restriction with paved roads? And I wondered if you had asked the highway department about coming off of paved roads into construction? And if, if there's, um, ways around it, then, um, the impact of not taking up, um, access on a road that's paved and probably more desirable for housing lots. So, by the, by the, uh, new proposal, I'm wondering why you have to still start with paved roads as part of H?
Jeff, do you want to answer that or do you want me to start?
Well, um, Michael can talk a little bit about the Wheelock experience. The planning board is of the opinion that the, the network of unpaved lane and a half, barely adequate for residential, um, unpaved roads we have, um, barely work for the houses that have been developed on them. I mean, we have, we have mud pits at certain, uh, times, uh, sliding around all winter. It's a dust bowl right now. I mean, these are roads that were built hundreds of years ago, 100, 150 years ago for, for sparse rural traffic. And now they're being used for many, many residences. And to compound that with building a major industrial project off of them, it's, um, it, it's too much for these roads. That's our, that's our feeling, I mean, many of us live on them. And, uh, a paved road, um, there's no dust, um, the highway department can, uh, can, uh, keep it maintained in the winter. You don't sink out of sight in the spring. And they don't degrade like, uh, like a, a dirt road. So our feeling is if you're going to do a major industrial project that will take months to construct with, um, large trucks and, um, employees coming in and out every day, the, the, uh, site manager over at Wheelock said he's running a small city over there. It's like a small city that has to come and go every day. To us, that takes a paved road.
Yeah, if, I, I just speak to that as well. I mean, having lived on Pratt Corner during Wheelock, you know, the, the first thing I would say is that it really is a misnomer when people refer to this as solar farms, that there's a quaint smallness to it. And to Jeff's point, these are industrial installations. Um, and so the reality is when Wheelock was built, there were lineups of, um, flatbed semis every morning bringing things in, whether it was steel or, um, other materials. And it, you know, went on for weeks at a time. There is a whole crew of people who are working there and, you know, contractors and subcontractors, each of whom has their own pickup truck or box truck or some large, uh, vehicle heavily loaded. And, you know, these things happen, um, in thaw season, they happen in spring during mud season. And so, you know, in the original wording, one of the things that we talked about was an alternative would be a plan to, um, basically maintain and repair a dirt road. So that was an alternative and it's still there, it's just not articulated. But I think the board sort of realized that if you're going to do an industrial project that's this level of development, we need roads that are structurally sound and can deal with those huge trucks and that constant traffic for months. You know, because it's not just people commuting back and forth. And the language is open to alternatives, but I think it's an acknowledgement that this is a small rural town. That's the definition of, you know, why we live here and that a small rural towns only have so much solid infrastructure. And not everything that wants to be built can be built without some alternative plan.
I'm, I'm sure we can entertain more questions.
Jeff, excuse me, Ashley has a que- a question or a comment?
Okay.
Hi, thanks, I'm Ashley Piecroft, I live on Baker Road. Um, so as for the paved roads, I'm just curious why you changed the language? You wanted to make it, you, you, you distilled it as you say, why did you do that?
Uh, well, Jeff, do you want to speak to it, do you want me to jump in or shall we leave it to Donna?
Donna hasn't spoken in a while.
The reason we distilled it is because, because we felt that it wasn't clear enough what we, what was being proposed. If you read the language carefully, that's in front of you now, basically, it doesn't really talk about, um, the alternatives being options, whether one or not is preferred. And it specifically does, um, puts in, at the end, some confusion about jurisdictions on public ways versus special permits. And that was really where it got the most concerning. The highway department and the, um, select board essentially have jurisdictions over public ways as far as paving, bonds, that kind of thing. But the planning board with their special permit granting authority and other issues they have, have a lot of jurisdiction over ways. Subdivision ways, A and Rs, whether they're adequate to approve an A and R. And whether there's other issues that would deal with construction, whether or not there's wetlands, whether there's endangered species, all things that are jurisdictional to the planning board. And the way this was written, it, it just really didn't clarify. And the way this was written, it just really didn't clarify those jurisdictional pieces. So, we simplified it to say, look, it's got to be on a paved way. There's waiver provisions. If you want to waiver, propose what your waiver is. We'll give it to the select board and the highway for their jurisdiction and then we'll keep our jurisdictional issues.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one other question related to H. Is it okay to ask it now?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So, we are in a butter to the potential Baker Road site. And the access road to the site runs between mine and my neighbor's home. And I'm curious if that road needs to be paved or if Baker Road needs to be paved or both.
So, I think, actually, I'll tell you what our original thinking was, but I guess I would just hearken back to the fact that if this new language is approved, there's more options, there's more flexibility. But I think what we talked about in the language you're staring at now is that it's all about access to the site. So, the initial idea, you'll see in there, it says something about impact to the road. So, it's not the immediate access, you know? So, if you drove a half a mile down a dirt road and then there was a road, you know, going between two lots to get back into the backland, it's not that immediate land. It's, you know, what's going to be impacted? So, the initial thinking was if you're going to be bringing trucks down, you know, a road half a mile and then turning into the woods, the conversation would be what kind of impact for access broadly speaking? That was our original conversation. I think importantly where we have it now is that it's more flexible in that the developer or the applicant can propose a waiver if they don't want it. But because right now, it just says it has to be paved. If it's not paved, any part of it, then they would have to be a waiver and a discussion about how do you mitigate the impact on that non-paved road? Is that helpful?
Well, I'm just still unclear if that. I think you said that the access road does not have to be paved.
No, I guess what I'm.
This pertains to construction access.
Yep.
It doesn't, Donna, correct me. It doesn't necessarily mean that another way in for ultimate access for inspection vehicles and whatnot couldn't be off of a dirt road. I mean, this is construction.
Yep. Okay.
Because that's where you're going to get the big impact.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we've been through logging a couple of times and there have also been 18-wheeler log loaders that have gone right down this road between our houses. I was just curious if the paving applies to the road between our houses, the access road, or if it only applies to the dirt road.
The road between your houses isn't a public way. That's just the private roadway into the lot. Yeah, so, I mean, the planning board's jurisdiction around special permits can certainly put conditions on the condition of that access road to make sure that it doesn't affect wetlands, doesn't affect endangered species, doesn't affect your wells, you know, that kind of thing. But it's not a public way. And so, it's really their issue on how good an access it is as long as it doesn't affect you as in a butter as far as affect your property physically.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense, Jeff and everybody?
Yep.
You always make sense, Donna.
Oh, thank you, Michael. Don't always agree with me, but I always make sense, right?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, so, we can always come back to this if there's other questions or concerns because this is a significant one. And Michael, you covered L?
I.
I, excuse me, yeah, okay. So, move on to J. I mean, I simply reiterates what's already a requirement of the bylaw, but it's kind of a reminder that you have to have the required frontage to do this or to do any use in Chutesbury. So, J, now, the J is a significant one. It creates a map of, that shows the limit of possible solar farms in Chutesbury. Now, I'm trying to figure out how to get that map up. And it shows a maximum of nine on large blocks. It doesn't put a solar farm on every block. This is a potential solar farm. So, Steve, can you see where I am? How do I get out of here and get back to sharing something else?
Can you minimize on the?
Okay, minimize this. I have something up here now that I want to share.
If you can see it on your screen, Jeff, we'll see it.
Yeah.
Can you see it?
No, we're still seeing the original document.
Wait, your screen sharing is paused. Let me see if I can.
Did somebody pause his screen sharing?
See if I can unpause it.
According to this, you are on-screen sharing from what I'm looking at.
Yeah. Okay, and I have something up in front of my face here, but.
You're not seeing it.
I'm seeing it, but y'all aren't seeing it.
Why don't you stop sharing and then reshare and maybe it'll refresh?
All right, there we go. Look at that. Screen share. Nice suggestion. Everybody see it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, this is Chutesbury. This is based on our zoning map. And this creates nine potential blocks of land on which a large ground-mounted solar facility could be proposed. One, two, three, this is the Wheelock site where there already is one. Four, this is over and into the Baker Road area. Five, this goes down into Klavon Land. This is mostly Klavon Land. Nine, this is everything to the east of Wendell Road. This is in between Wendell Road and Montague Road in here. This is roughly where the Carver one is proposed. And this is to the west of Montague Road going over to the Leverett border. This guy here is bounded by Pratt Corner Road. And is this still Sand Hill or does it turn into what, Weatherwood or?
That's Cushman Road, I would believe.
I lose my geography down here.
Yeah, I think it's Cushman Road underneath the reservoir.
Yeah, I think one of the proposals is over in here somewhere. So, one proposal here, one proposal in this one, one proposal in this one, and one proposal in this one. But the more important thing is this sets out the town's limit intolerance for total number of solar farms and where they should go over time.
Can I ask a quick question? Judy Isman from Pellam Planning Board.
Wait, wait, say it again, please.
It's Judy Isman from Pellam Planning Board.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hi, Judy.
Hi, I just am wondering, because I haven't seen the definitions for a large scale. How big is large scale in Chutesbury?
15 acres.
15 acres, okay. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
15 acres is your max. But remember, there is a waiver provision that goes with this bylaw. So, applicants under certain circumstances could propose larger proposals than 15.
And Jeff, do you want to just explain the 15 acres in relation to the four to one?
Right, the 15 acres, sure, thanks. 15 acres is the total area dedicated to the large ground mounted solar installation. And the four to one means if you have 15 acres for that, then you need 60 acres, 15 times four, four times, of land on the same parcel dedicated for the life of the project to carbon sequestration through forest growth. And that requirement is existing. The only thing we did to that earlier that I explained was we took out the commercial forestry for that duration and felt sequestration would be better served by not conducting commercial forestry in there, in those 60 acres.
So, I think one thing I would just say about this map is, one of the rationales is you'll see there's, because we're looking at access from roadways, these are all bounded by roadways. You'll see a couple of smaller ones in the southern part of town, which don't have numbers. And that's because we felt that they were just too small for development. They actually might, I actually don't know the square feet, but I mean, they could be too small given the four to one ratio. But regardless, it seemed like in order to host a large-scale ground-mounted facility, we wanted to have enough acreage that it wasn't taking up the entire forested land between the roadways. So, we exempted those smaller ones. I think there's a total of four.
One of the blocks we left out is this one that's bounded by Leonard Road, West Pellam, Leverett Road and Pellam Hill. There was some thought to making this whole thing one block or having this be a block. But this area is entirely ringed with homes, some of which extend back into the woods. It's not large an area. And it also has a great big wetland right smack in the middle of it. So, not the best block for locating solar. So, we kept a number out of there. Emily, this is the same situation here.
I have a question about the zones. Why, Lynn, it's Kevin Rudden. Why are there zones nine, five and six when the underlying land ownership won't support anything going there? Most of that is state-owned.
Not up here and not up here or here.
A good portion of nine is.
Yes, we recognize.
And did you also identify in those zones the actual parcels of land that are open that are, say, 20 acres or larger?
We were aware of that. And they're large parcels, they're large blocks. And there is still quite a bit of private land. The only one where you probably have, you probably are right on is down here.
And number nine, a huge portion of nine is state-owned.
Quite a bit, but again, along these roads, not necessarily.
Right, but also, most of the vacant parcels of land, 20 acres or larger, are not nine, five and six. They're in the other zones. So, I was just curious as to why there's identified zones if the underlying land use and acreage doesn't support them.
Well, I think to Jeff's point, it is possible, even if the vast majority of the land is, you know, state-owned, for example, in six or nine, it's possible for someone to come in and find a lot that would be there. You know, I think we were trying to balance distribution of possibility and not having clustering. But if we just took it off the map and said you can't develop nine, it raises the question of why not? And there's no way to split an eastern nine and a western nine.
Well, the reason why I'm doing is from a tax policy standpoint, I would hope that a town bylaw would want to direct people to build solar farms that benefit the town. If they're built on state land, the town gains no revenue from that. And so, from a tax policy standpoint, and try to push down, excuse me, push down the residential tax burden, I would want to see solar operations located on lands where the pilot money would go to the town and not the state. So, I would just say scrap nine, five and six completely and identify areas that benefit the town.
Well, what are you going to tell the landowner over in here that has 15 acres or more and wants to do something?
Well, if you'll let me share the screen, I can show you how many parcels there are like that because I have it mapped out.
So, you want to take them right out?
No, I have those parcels mapped out on a map in each district showing all open space, 20 acres or larger. So, if you let me share the screen, I can show you how many are in each district.
I would note that existing parcels are not forever. Land changes, parcel size just change. Someone could accumulate parcels.
Well, I see the state buying more since they just bought a big 117-acre chunk and took it off the tax rolls in the last six months. But my point is, if this is a bylaw to benefit the citizens of Chutesbury, I think your zones to allow them should be on land where the town will realize the money from the pilot, not the state.
I guess I would just hearken back to the revised purpose. That the purpose, there's three actual purposes. One is to main contiguous forest land and sequestration and ecological preservation, as well as the financial benefits, which is already there. And so, to sort of move things over and so, we want to sort of consolidate and make sure that it's in privately owned as opposed to state-owned land. That's not the only directive in the purpose.
Okay, but I'm looking at it as your successor. I'm looking at it strictly from a tax policy perspective. I sat on the finance committee call last week or this week where there was a huge call for let's not impact people's taxes. Well, sending pilot money to the state impacts people's taxes. And I understand what you're trying to do. It's a well-thought-out bylaw. But I think you need to look at the underlying land ownership and the availability of the large parcels and where they are and then map those out as more suitable than land that, is it feasible? I mean, if the state's buying land to protect the watershed, I can't see them allowing a large-scale development on it. Doesn't mean they won't, but if they do, the benefit of it goes to the state, not to the town. So, why would you deliberately give the tax benefits away to the state? I'd want to keep them in the town.
I'm not sure there's any legal reason to restrict zoning use. I'm concerned about that rationale. I mean, when you do zoning districts as this sort of is a concept of, you're basically saying where you'll allow industrial development. And it can't be solely based on not allowing people to use their property as they so choose.
I didn't say that, Donna.
No, no, but I mean, I'm concerned about the rationale of not allowing solar in nine, five and six at all, large-scale solar, because of who may own the property, is what I'm saying.
Well, it's quite common for a town to decide where it wants this industrial growth and where it doesn't. Most towns put them on main roads or highways. Why would you want to cite it in watershed protection land? That's all I'm asking.
Well, if it had an ecological impact, it might not be able to be cited there. So, I think the leading edge, what you're saying is that you would want the town to financially benefit, not the state to financially benefit. It's not watershed land per se in terms of its function.
If you'd let me share the screen, I could show you the map of the ownership with your nine districts overlaid, and I think you'd be surprised. And how much land the state owns?
Oh, I used to work for the state. I know how much they owned. But the private land there is also significant private land.
And I could show you that as well.
And what happens all the time in development is parcel accumulation where our private owners buy and sell among themselves until they have large enough pieces of land to do projects like this.
But I'm just, all I'm asking is.
The situation that you have today of the size of parcels and the ownership is fluid. And that can change. Parcels can be combined very easily among owners. Certain owners sell out, others buy. owners sell out, others buy, and they have enough to do a project.
I'm not arguing that point, but you're obviously not interested in seeing the map that I proposed.
I'm interested in it. Why not just put it up? It's going to take two minutes. Just let him share a screen.
They don't want to see it, obviously.
I, I think we should let him do it.
It'd be a lot faster than continuing to argue about it. Just let him put it up there.
No, I made my point. If they're not interested in hearing about it, that's fine. My position as the assessor is to argue the tax policies of the town. All I hear in the, in the year I've been here is residential property taxes are too much. The one solar farm you have knocked down the tax burden by two percentage points at residences. I would want to make sure that any other solar farm built knocks that down further. We're right, we're now at a 96% of every tax dollar comes out of a homeowner. A couple more solar farms could get that down to 94%.
Right, and so what we tried to do is strike the balance where, if you look at this map, you know, regardless of, you know, the details of the nine, five, and six, the, the intent was to distribute it across the town so that there wasn't overdevelopment in one area. You know, if we want, you know, and that's part, it gets back to the purpose, that what was pointed out at the very beginning to us when we started this conversation is, if you're leading with finances, you, it could be a free-for-all. It would be, we could have, we could become an Irving and have lots of development to have very low taxes. What we're trying to do is strike a balance between responsible development and preservation of contiguous fire, you know, forest land. So that's what this is attempting to do.
With all due respect, you're developing the town's financial policy through zoning, and you're not looking at, how do you achieve a good policy? And I'm going to argue, your districts, I know you're not listening, I know you disagree. I'm just telling you, from my perspective, you're putting zones where they can't be built, period. If you don't want to listen and you don't want to see it, that's fine. I'm just making the point. That's my job.
Okay, I, I would suggest that, that we take a couple of minutes and look at Kevin's map. I mean...
It, it's going to have to be quick, because it...
It does have to be quick. I, I would note also that, that we turn into a pumpkin at 10 o'clock. The, the meeting will, will have to close then for the Zoom stuff. So let's just take a couple of minutes and do this, and...
Well, Linda will have, Linda, I think you're the one who can sort of give him sharing ability.
So while, while you're doing that, Donna, I have a question. Does Town of Chutesbury have any jurisdiction over the property owned by DCR?
No.
So...
We don't even get to assess it. They assess it. They determine what it's worth, and then they determine what they're going to pay us the taxes on it.
Can we hold just for a second, please?
But if someone decides they want to build in an area owned by the state...
They can't.
What do you mean, they can't?
They're not going to build in an area owned by the state. In fact, the, the state has regulations called the Watershed Protection Act, which depends on the private land. I have seen solar farms in the central part of the state built on Watershed Protection Act land because they've met the requirements on private land that's within the watershed and subject to the regulation. So it, it mostly can happen.
Yes, but privately.
And, and the pilot payments, if we are allowed to assess pilot payments in Massachusetts, would go to the town.
Not if we don't own the land.
Well, private parties own the land.
If the state sells it to them.
This is not all state. This is not all state. This green does not mean state. What this green means is this is the forest conservation zone of our town. It does not mean it's state land.
I'm aware of that.
Also, Donna, I have a question. You know, for Wheelock, the pilot's coming from the developers, not from the landowner.
Correct.
So there's a...
The landowner pays taxes based on the lease that they have with the solar company.
But the pilot's coming from the, the lease, the, the party who's leasing.
Correct.
Right, so it's, it's not, right.
The personal property's owned by the less C, so they're the ones that have the pilot on the personal property at least.
Right, but we also tax those 30 acres at an industrial rate, not the same rate as the, the rest of open space in town.
We only have one tax rate in town.
I say, we value it higher. We value it as industrial land, therefore the tax payment is higher.
Okay, but I guess, to your point, you know, say, in nine, if the state owns the land and the company comes in and wants to develop it and leases the land from the state to develop a solar project, the pilot would come from the less C.
Pilot goes to the state. It's their land.
We can't... You need to stop sharing your screen so the other one can be brought up.
But, but why would we eliminate the possibility, even if most of nine is owned by the state? Why would we eliminate the possibility of a solar farm in the remaining private property? However, that changes hands over the next...
I'm not asking you to do that.
Well, you just said, you should rule out number nine. You're saying, take it out.
Can you see my screen?
Not yet.
You can now. You can now.
All right, are you looking at this map?
Nope.
Nope.
I can't see it.
Okay, how do I bring it up, then?
Do you have a screen icon on your bottom of your screen?
Hold on a second.
The green.
Yes, I do. Hold on, hold on. I want that one, yep. Now you have it?
We will.
Okay, what you see is, if you look, all of six is owned by the state, half of five is owned by the state, and the majority of nine is owned by the state. The rest of that land in crosshatch is all under chapter, chapter 61 protection. If you go down to District 1 and 2, all that orange is owned by the Town of Amherst. So that's limiting. That's, that's a watershed. So, but if you look at nine, you're left with very little land. You're left with the land on the back of Wendell Road, and I'm not saying rule that out at all, but if you look at the majority of, six is completely owned by the state, about a half of five in, in, I'd say 60% of nine. And I just wanted to draw that to your attention, because I, I don't think that factored in when you drew those lines.
No, it did. I've seen these maps for years, and they look just like I remember them. The only place I would completely agree with you is down here, because it's all plotted. If you were to draw a 60-acre square, you could put dozens and dozens of them in here, in here, in here, over here, over here, all through here.
All right, can you see this map now, in red?
Yep.
That's every parcel in town right now that's 68, that's 20 acres or over that's vacant.
Yeah.
So just, just point it out. It's the, the rest of five not owned by the state, the small parcel nine not owned by the state, and that's it.
Yeah, and, and like I said before, parcels get, you have parcel accumulation, so you have small parcels that get joined together and they become larger parcels.
Absolutely.
Happens all the time. Most of these blocks that, that are showing here are probably larger than 60 acres.
They're 20 and up.
Yeah.
So...
I, frankly, Kevin, I don't see any problem with any of these districts except for this one.
For six.
Which one are you pointing?
Six.
Six.
Right.
All right, I'll, I'll give you the screen back. I just wanted to point that out because, just from a...
But, but, but based on what Kevin just showed us, with the exception of six, I don't see any problem allowing, you know, one zone per area that we've defined in our map.
I would agree.
And that, seeing that land in red was actually helpful, because it confirms the zoning approach with the exception of the District 6.
Yeah, I'll be happy to share that map with you if you'd like.
Well, let, I... Let's keep going. I mean, I think, I think...
I made my point. Thank you.
I've been trying to raise my hand.
I haven't seen it. I'm sorry. Is this Henry?
It is. How do you raise your hand on this? Sorry?
Go ahead, just identify yourself, so...
Henry Geddes, Baker Road resident. I still have a question about the, the acreage for the solar farms. The way I read it, it seems to me that the size is variable, and the only real restriction is that it be one-quarter the size of the total lot, so it could be 50 or upwards of 50 acres. But you spoke about 15 acres, which I did not read anywhere in the bylaws.
I'll find it for you, if you just give me a second. I believe it's in the definitions, which usually are a good place to hide.
Oh, that's right, it's in the back.
Yeah.
It was not in my copy.
No, so in the full zone, Henry, in the, in the full zoning bylaw, there's, there's three places. So there's the bylaw, the stuff we're going through now, and then at the very back, there's definitions, which in this case says, what is a large-scale, ground-mounted solar installation, and what is the commercial development, and what is the X, Y, and Z?
Okay, so there's a fixed, 15 is the fixed maximum.
Yeah, and I think the four to one ratio is actually in the beginning, maybe in the use table. So there, there, those pieces are all in different parts.
All right, fair enough.
Am I correct, Jeff?
You are correct. It's in the definition, 15 acres, and then the four times is four times 15. Has to be around it for sequestration. If it proposed 10, then you'd have 40 acres around it.
So Jeff, does it say it can be no more than 15 acres?
That's the limit, and then, of course, there is the, the waiver provision to consider if they do propose a waiver of that. But yes, going in, you can't propose anything more than 15 for the actual solar facility.
Just a clarification, that's not a, that's the old, I mean, that's our existing solar bylaw. That's not new, anything newer proposed.
Yeah, and the definition won't change.
Right.
We're not, we're not suggesting the definition gets changed.
Becky has a question.
So Jeff, Jeff, just the way you described it, you said the four times had to be around it. I just want to be clear, it's not 15 plus the 60 around it. It's 60 total? Or is it six, is it 15 plus 60?
Okay. It says, "If forest land is proposed to be converted to a ground-mounted solar installation, the plan shall designate thereon an area of unprotected land on the same lot and of a size equal to four times the total area of such installation." So it needs to be four times the size of the installation and on the same lot.
So it's, it's 60 plus 15?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So let's go back to going through the, the solar. We're, we still have to keep in mind that 10 o'clock limit. We still have another one to go through.
Okay, I, I've been disabled from screen sharing.
Well done. Okay.
Yippee-ya-ay, let's see which one. Okay, we're back?
Yes.
All right, this last one here was the map that we just spent a long time talking about, and let's see what's, what's next.
This is a small one. I could do this one.
This one here?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So this is the section pertaining to Native American sacred locations and the process around it, and what got added here was not only description of the characteristics, but actually the location of it, so that was making a little bit more specific in terms of, and this is under the, I believe it's the required documentation. Is that correct, Jeff? That's, that's that section? So in terms of the documents, it has to state the location as well, not just the characteristics, and includes photographs, et cetera, of the site.
And it kind of makes the first sentence, it kind of makes this consistent with the first sentence that does talk about location. So we want locations on the site plans. This was added just as a more complete listing of potentially harmful materials, hazardous, or known carcinogenic, that's popular demand, that was added. Let's see, we're...
Almost done.
We are. Look at this, no yellow. Oh, let me see what this is. Okay. All right, so here, here we have visual impact section that's already there, and we wanted to add something to the access driveway section that, that addresses visual impact from the road. So we added the words incompatible appearance from the roadway. So it's a little vague, a little general, but it's probably context-specific to, to what's around the entranceway. So we just added that. It's something that could be considered at the roadway where the access driveway meets the road. We want the appearance to be the most compatible it can be with the surrounding areas and homes and other driveways. And then, go down, this is, this is a pretty easy one. This substitutes some requirements that we had for wetlands before with the new ANRAD process. Penny Jakes is still out there somewhere. She may want to talk about that. That's what was done with the four projects that are before the Concom now. They did the ANRAD. Concom likes that process. The developer seems to be okay with it, so we're requiring the ANRAD. Advanced Notice of Resource Area Delineation, I think is what it means. So that's how you get your wetlands resolved, and everyone agrees on where the wetlands are in the upfront. Concom, want to say anything?
I would just say, I think this is how solar developers plan to do things anyway, so it makes sense to incorporate this into your bylaw. It's certainly what's before the town with the four areas scattered throughout town that are being considered for solar development right now, and anyone abutting them has probably stayed abreast of the process, which is still ongoing.
Okay, the next, the next one here is, is kind of results from things we learned from the Wheelock project, that how to keep, how to keep runoff and other things out of water resources is to buffer the water resources and keep new roads, excavation, filling, grading, even the installation of drainage facilities at least 100 feet from any water resources, right off the bat. So when you're planning your project, all these ground alterations need to be at least 100 feet from the water resources, so there's adequate buffer and infiltration capacity so that you won't get any sediment or other pollutants into the water resources. So this kind of mirrors the Concom jurisdiction of 100 feet, but we made it a zoning requirement here. And that's it. Oh, nope, that's white.
Donna wanted to add this.
Donna wanted to add that, yep.
Donna's fault.
Donna's fault. So my presentation is concluded. And now I'm going to try to get back with you guys. And now I'm going to try to get back with you guys.
If you do the stop sharing.
There we go, got it.
Okay, does anybody want to say anything more before we move to the, to the next amendment? Yeah, Ashley has got her hand up.
Thank you. I'm, in order for the, hi, sorry, Ashley Piecroft, Baker Road. In order for the special permit to pass and for you to allow another solar installation or for whatever to be approved, it has to be a super majority, right? Like five of the seven of you? Is that correct? So I know that...
Yes.
Thank you, I know that's, at, at least with the Baker Road site, some of you are a butters, so you'll have to recuse themselves. So I'm curious, in that situation, what's the number for, is it still five of you need to vote in favor? Or if there's only five of you voting, does it become three out of five that have to vote in favor of the project?
Jeff?
Five.
Okay. Okay, what if you have a situation where three, I don't know if this is possible, where three of you are a butters?
If, well, Donna can speak to this, but like with the Wheelock track, when the select board was doing the pilot, we were, at one point, all butters. And so there's a state law where you can basically vote and identify that you all have a conflict. I'm forgetting what the name of it is, Donna.
necessity.
The rule of necessity. And so you all acknowledge that you have a conflict. And then, once you vote and to invoke the rule of necessity, then you can take action. Because the state law requires that body to take action. And so even though you're in conflict, but you have to go through that process.
Is the planning board appointed or elected?
Say what?
Is the planning board appointed or elected?
Elected.
Elected.
It's only elected boards that can use the rule of necessity.
Right, so it would seem like if we don't have enough people to meet a quorum, then that would be when that would be invoked, correct, Donna?
Right, correct.
Okay, there's a, Susan Millinger, you have a question?
Yes, a quick one. So we would assume that the most large solar installations we could have in town would be nine, is that correct? But how about small installations? Smaller than 15 feet?
15 acres, you mean?
No limit. The, the small ones are up to an acre and a half. The large ones are an acre and a half to 15.
Okay.
But we have, there's no limit on the small ones. And there's no limit on the ones that are in people's yards.
Right.
To serve their homes.
So do the small ones come to the planning board also?
Yes.
But on the use table, they're, they're different, correct, Jeff? I don't have the use table in front of me. I can go get it.
Yeah, the, the smaller up to an acre and a half. The, the small ones are by special permit of the planning board and the RR, the FC, the town center. Can't put a large one in the town center, but you can put a small one, not at Lake Wyolla. So, yeah, this is all laid out. We haven't made any changes in these, these are all laid out in our use table, where these can go and not go.
Okay, I saw that Henry Geddes had his hand up.
Yes, thank you. I noticed there's no clause in the bylaws for potential noise, which is rare, but there are documented cases of it. And I wonder if the, the planning board could consider that as an item. There's, they accommodate their, the visual element. This would be about sound. I will submit in writing a model blurb that might be useful.
Henry, is the model from another town or something came up?
That's right.
Yeah. I know, I, you know, just as a comment, before I was on the planning board and the current bylaws being developed, there was discussion about sound. I think you're correct, it's not in there currently.
I've, I've spent a lot of time in and around solar farms, I've never heard anything. But if you've got a paper, some kind of jury paper that says they make noise, we'd love, we'd love to have it.
Yeah, it's best to be preemptive rather than wait for the thing to come up.
So if you send, I think if you send that to, Jeff, do you want, should Henry send it to you and I? Or the whole planning board, the language?
Planning.org. Yeah.
Send it where now?
Well, just send it to the planning board, the planning board web address.
Yeah, it's planning@shootsberry.org.
Okay.
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 I think Eric has something.
Yes. Did you have a question for me? No, I thought you were saying something.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just, I mean, if people want to talk more about solar, we can. Otherwise, I suggest we move on to the open space.
I, I thought Eric Stocker had his hand up.
I, I have a quick, my simple question, I mean, I have several questions. I'll just, but I won't, I'll skip the majority of them. Just maybe, maybe this is a question for Donna, but what are the chances we're going to run into like significant court costs because of this? If we pass this bylaw, I presume that maybe if somebody owned the land, they might say, wait a minute, these guys are being too restrictive. As we've suggested, this may be a more restrictive bylaw than in the past. Is there anything, has that ever been thought about? Is that ever considered, examined, whatever?
Well, remember that the zoning bylaw, once it passes, has to go to the attorney general's office for approval. And if the attorney general thought that this in any way would be a taking of people's property, then they would caution that to us in their opinion letter. But I think it's important to realize that we limit zoning around, whether it's residential, industrial, all the time. And those cases say, basically, those aren't takings. They still can use their land, they can still use their land for profitable purposes. The fact that they can't use it for the exact thing they want to as far as use doesn't constitute a taking. So I think that would, I don't think this would constitute a taking, which would be the only way they could get damages for the zoning.
Right, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Ashley?
You have to unmute, Ashley.
Got it.
There you go.
Okay, sorry. Are we guaranteed the pilot money? Is that a guarantee for perpetuity? Is there any question that that pilot money might not ever come in or might not always come in?
Well, the pilots for each project, and so the current pilots for the life of the project. So each, if there was another project, there'd be another pilot and it's negotiated with the select board and the developer. And so if you, as I understood it, and Donna could correct me, the, the duration could be negotiated. We did it equal payments for the life of the project. It could have been bigger projects because the value is different at one lifecycle of the project versus another. And it's all based on the act, it's, it's not on the revenue of the project, it's on the value of the stuff. So the, the metal and the panels and things like that. And so presumably, when it's new stuff, it's valued more. And it's, when it's old stuff, it's valued less. But the current negotiated process is a level funded across, but that was negotiated.
Donna, would, you, you seem to be up on what's going on here with the ability to tax solar facilities and, and hence require pilot payments, negotiate pilot payments and where that is in the state now. Could you give us a little trimmer on current events?
Sure, Ashley, that's really the $64,000 question, to be perfectly honest.
Or more.
Basically, or, or zero dollar question. Basically, the, I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but chapter 59, section 5, clause 45 basically says that solar projects are exempt from taxes. Everybody for years interpreted that to mean residential solar projects, solar projects that were attached to houses. Section 5 is essentially the exemptions from taxes. And it's got certain senior citizen provisions, veterans provisions, that kind of thing. Charitable property, that kind of thing. But a solar project took their tax bill for personal property to the appellate tax board on an appeal. And the appellate tax board ruled that that section applies to solar developments regardless of size. So that if there's not a pilot, essentially, right now, the state of the law is just from the appellate tax board, not from any higher courts, but from the appellate tax board, that personal property and solar arrays is not taxable. So the, one of the companies that has a pilot applied for a tax abatement, they were denied, and they have now taken that town up to the appellate tax board arguing that they don't own taxes on their solar array. The town is, of course, arguing that a pilot is different from just the tax exemption under section 5. It's a signed agreement entered into two parties that knowingly entered into the agreement. And therefore, the solar array developer should not be able to get out of the payments to the town. That case was completely stopped in progress because of COVID. So we don't have any kind of resolution to that matter. There is legislation proposed that I think our town officials and a lot of the town officials that I know are constantly speaking to their representatives and senator about, basically saying that it's very, very important to the small towns that are relying on this pilot income to get that legislation passed. And what that legislation would do is essentially make section 5 only applicable to small residential solar arrays. And it would leave taxable to the communities, the large ones. So I think that there's going to be a legislative solution to this. I think that they will be, have to pay their pilots, but there is not a specific legal solution to it right now.
Okay, thank you. So it's possible that they may not have to pay if there's no pilot. But chances are legislation's coming that's going to make it so that they do have to pay for industrial scale solar.
That's right, and the other thing I want to add is that almost all of the solar companies that have signed pilots, even with that case, are paying their pilots.
Yeah.
We're not trying to get out of them.
Yeah, it's within their interest.
There's several that are playing this game because they want reduced payments, I think, more than anything. But most of the solar companies are not trying to get out of their pilots. By far and large, most of them are not, so, just to be fair to them.
Thank you.
Jeff?
But Donna, until this is settled, wouldn't the, the incentive, the inducement to willingly enter into pilot payment arrangements with towns be left? Until this is settled? I mean, why sign a pilot when you may not have to pay taxes at all?
Because I think they realize that that's not ultimately going to be the outcome, that they may be able to escape, they may not get their special permit, they may escape a year or two. You know, but that the legisla, if they keep playing that game, the legislation will come down and they will be paying taxes on it. I think the other thing that's a really interesting issue, Jeff, just, I don't want to get too much into the weeds on the open space, but the, the other interesting issue is that if they in fact basically argue that they don't owe any taxes, then, and try and get out of the pilots, then the tax, the taxes, if and when they come, can be considerably different than the pilot in protecting them. So I, it's a really double edged sword, what the game they're playing right now. It's a really double edged sword.
Anything else on solar? We, we, we'd like to move on to the open space. Suzie Mosher has a question.
There. So I'm looking at this overall and seeing that starting off with it has to come off a paved road and listing nine areas where they're to limit where the lots are developed. It seems that the real effect is that there really won't be much opportunity for people to develop large scale solar in Shootsberry. Is that the goal?
I, well, I would say that's not. And in fact, I would say there's eight opportunities in town, maybe, maybe seven if we take in Kevin's point about number six, section six. But, you know, the idea is to allow large scale solar, but to do it in a way that fits the character of the town and aligns with the master plan and the purpose. So we're trying to strike a balance where there's benefits to bring it in. People are supportive of solar for a variety of reasons. But do it in a thoughtful, regulated way. I don't think it's a backhanded way of saying no, because we're already creating opportunities. They just have to comply with the regulations that are out there. I mean, right now, you can, you could cluster large scale in one part of town. We could have an industrial part of town and have nothing anywhere else. And it seems like that could be one impact if, if we didn't do the distribution for, as an example of one of the regulations.
Or we could just have no limits and just take what comes willy nilly. If you look at, if you look at what we have now, we have one. And here we have a map that, that contemplates nine, maybe eight realistically overall. I mean, that's a, that's a tremendous increase in, in solar farms over what we have. I don't see any other little towns like us that have anywhere near that number of solar farms.
Yeah, I think if you compare to us to Leverett, right next door, which is highly restrictive. I think theirs is, you can't have a large scale bigger than 10 acres. You know, so by comparison, it's, it's just night and day.
Are we all set on this one? I mean, we, I'd like to move us along if we could. Judy Isman?
Yeah, Judy, I just had one question. I wasn't able to find anywhere where you have dealt with slope. Did I just miss it when I was looking through the bylaw?
Yes.
I did miss it. Okay, I'll look, great, I will look at it and don't take any more of your time with me and I...
We've lost her.
Bye.
Judy, what it does is you can't propose anything on an original slope over 15%.
Over 15%?
Right, on an original slope over 15%, you, you can't propose a solar facility.
That seems steep, but okay, that's interesting.
That's what we did on Wheelock and it worked out well. We didn't get erosion.
Okay, well, I'll talk to you about that another time, but thank you. Thank you very much for letting me listen in. Appreciate having gotten the notice. Bye.
Okay, open space?
Okay, I'm sharing again, are you guys with me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Whoops, way too big. There we go. Okay, so this is our open space design bylaw. There we go. Okay, so this is our open space design bylaw that was passed in 2008. It was the first of its kind in Massachusetts. We've had some experiences with it since. We've done two projects in town under this bylaw. I've also worked in probably 10 other towns and passed similar bylaws for them. And there's been sort of an evolution in thinking over the years. And so this is our attempt to bring our original model up to the current state of the art with these natural resource protection zoning bylaws. But with that in mind, we took some suggestions from the CONCOM as to the purpose. And they rejiggered it a little bit to place the ecological benefits front and center a little bit more than the commercial forestry. That was their preference, and that was fine. So we reworded the purpose a little bit. Now, this is an important one here. It's mentioned throughout the bylaw. But it says, "An open space design that does not require approval as a subdivision is allowed by special permit, subject to approval by the planning board." The current version has it allowed by site plan review. And these are projects that don't require a new subdivision road. That's a subdivision in Massachusetts, when you have a road and you have lots off the road. These types of projects would take their access directly off of the town road with driveways, or they would be on a shared driveway. And both of the ones that we have done in Chutesbury are of this type. They're non-subdivision proposals. But actually, one of them was five lots, and the other was only one lot. But those are actually big projects for Chutesbury. And we felt that a special permit would be a better vehicle to evaluate those projects. It would cause notice to be given to the neighbors. It would involve a public hearing. It would give the planning board a little more discretion in decision making, a little more control over these projects that we seem to be getting. So we changed it to a special permit type regime. If we go down... We go down, and this is a corollary here. This talks about the same thing, where you have a project where a new roadway is not proposed, and we're requiring a special permit now. And this is based on some cases that we've seen presented to us, which were numbers of houses that were twice or more what would otherwise be possible off of road frontage lots. It seemed to be a windfall that kind of defeated the conservation purposes of the bylaw. So we put in a review standard that in such case, the application will be subject to special permit review, which we've already talked about, under which the planning board may additionally consider the conservation benefits versus the detriment of permitting a number of residential units in excess of the base number otherwise possible without the benefit of this article. So previously, the number of units was all based on a formula. This can temper that a little bit. The planning board, through its special permit, might not allow that number of units if it acts to the detriment of the conservation purposes that are supposed to be achieved. So, and this is all based on examples that have been brought to us, where we kind of realized we didn't have enough, we didn't have enough control over these types of projects. So, impact statement. Again, this is the same thing again. Open space design that is not a subdivision and that is presented as a special permit. We just needed to change that language to make it consistent. Okay, let's see where the next thing is. Unit count calculation. Previously, and I've changed these in all the bylaws we're doing now, previously fractional units, when you work through the formulas, if you had a number like 1.58 units, you'd round that up to two units. We've changed that to rounding down to the next whole number because that's more in line with what zoning practice actually does. In fact, if you have three acres of land, 3.2 acres of land, and you want to create a couple of lots on the roadside, zoning doesn't let you round up, so you get two lots. You have to have the whole amount. And we wanted to make this consistent with zoning practice. So there's no more rounding up. You have to have the amount, and you round down. And the same thing here, rounding down. See, this talks about density bonuses. 10% density bonus per additional 5% preserved as open space. And again, this was a project that was brought to us where the applicant measured the 5% against the preserved open space, not the whole project area, which was the intent of the bylaw. The intent of the bylaw is 5% of the whole project area. So we felt we needed to state that explicitly because it did confuse an applicant. So this is the kind of learning, learning as we go. You know, what language doesn't quite work and make sense for people? We'll try to fix it up and make it more clear. And again, here, fractional units should be rounded down to the next whole number. Going down here, we discovered an error, which had one of these at 50%. Okay, now this one, this one was at 50% for density transfer. It said you can't do more than, you can't increase the lot count by more than 50%. But then down here, it said that by all means, density bonuses and density transfer, you can't increase by 25. So these two were at odds with each other. They both needed to be 25. So we set them at 25. Okay, here we go. Permanent open space and how it's configured. We had a proposal come in that had the open space actually proposed as the backyards, the undeveloped backyards of individual building lots. And that's not at all what this bylaw contemplates as open space, just people's backyard. But we realized there was nothing in the bylaw that prevented that. So we put in language that said, "The open space shall be configured as separate parcels from any building lots and permanently preserved from development as required." This reflects the real intent of the bylaw and closes that inadvertent loophole. So most of this stuff makes it a little bit stricter, gives the planning board a little more control over these. This one is a benefit to applicants because it provides more ways to conserve the land than just the conservation restriction, which is the only way you can do it now. So it offers other means to conserve the land, including recorded easements under earlier sections of Chapter 184. Donna knows what this is all about. This is what we had before we had the conservation restriction. Recorded zoning or subdivision conditions or ownership by a conservation organization as described above. Both of our projects in Chutesbury and the one I'm monitoring in Wendell, one of the biggest hangups to those projects were finding acceptable holders to the conservation restriction and then getting that all approved by the state. So we thought we'd build in some other, perhaps not as perfect methods of conservation, but at least they would be available so that the applicant could complete their project if they couldn't get a CR. And... That's it.
We still got 21 minutes left.
I'm not sure I do.
Well, we should see if somebody wants to say something.
Our numbers have shrunk.
I'm not seeing anybody wanting to comment.
Have we dwindled down to a precious few? Boy, I sure got rid of them.
Yeah, you know, there's something kind of lulling about your voice that you kind of...
I was getting punchy at the end.
Nothing as exciting as zoning.
I don't, I'm not seeing any more requests, any hands.
Yeah. Becky?
I see Becky. Yes, okay.
I thought you raised your hand, Becky.
I just saw it.
I raised this one. I was reaching for the electronic one. I'm just, so Jeff, with all these changes, you know, you keep using the word stricter and stricter. And I'm just wondering what impact you think all the changes will have in the process for new applicants?
Well, some of the strictness is closing loopholes that never should have been there. And having this bylaw achieve conservation and not windfall development. You know, it wasn't created to create windfalls, although in many cases it is quite generous, and it still will be. And we just felt that some things needed to be tightened up a little bit. There are still many more development options under this bylaw than most towns have under their normal types of zoning and subdivision regulations.
Becky, I guess I would also add, just like with the other one, the fact that we expanded the purpose. What we've discussed in prior meetings, it's really sort of getting better alignment to the original intent. And so it's, I would suggest it's not about being strict so much as making sure that what was intended when it was first created is actually implemented, now that there's been a couple of, you know, run-throughs.
I would actually agree. The word stricter, I don't think is quite accurate to describe what these changes that the planning board is recommending. I think it's closing loopholes. I think, as you said, bringing it in closer alignment to the original intent. And we've learned some things from projects that we're trying to fold back into the zoning bylaw.
Like I said, the biggest problem that our two applicants had and the one in Wendell is having right now are finding holders for the conservation restriction. And you have to have a holder on a conservation restriction. And you have to get state approval. The Secretary of Environmental Affairs has to approve it and sign off on it. You have to go through that process. So we devised three other methods of conserving the land if a CR was not in the cards, if that wasn't going to work out. We pretty much, you know, have to allow the project to go forward. But we were in a bind before because we just forced them to get CRs. And it was a torturous process. This could make it easier because there are other methods that they can avail themselves of. So I think the biggest problem our developers have had, we've addressed in a positive way for future developers.
And I would say too, it's been a real education having the developers show us how they mean to game the system in order to obtain results we think are inappropriate. We learned quite a bit.
Have you had projects that failed that did not go forward?
We've had inquiries.
Right.
We've had inquiries about...
We've had projects where they've come before us, and we've had discussions, and then they went away. And they haven't come back.
Right. But I think, Becky, those interactions were where some of the information came from because they would come and ask questions to say, "This is how we interpreted it, or are we correct?" And then there was a subsequent conversation. And from those learnings, either we learned that there was inconsistencies or confusion, or they were reading it in a way and taking off on a direction that was not aligned with the intent.
Okay. And my last question, do you think that the amount of applicants may increase in the future? Because it's two in 10 years, two projects in 10 years, right? So far?
I think most of that has to do with the amount of building that's not going on. I mean, I think that we have no control over.
To reduce it, to reduce the idea, to reduce the lack of development or growth to this one particular zoning bylaw, I think is laying too much on it. You know, there's plenty of places to build in town, and there's plenty of flexibility we've given people with shared driveways, flexible front, you know, the list goes on. So, you know, we've had some people come to us with projects that they couldn't have done in the old, with the old set of bylaws that they, you know, that are now possible. And one other point, when people do come before the planning board to propose something, we're looking to work with them. We're not trying to block. The spirit of the planning board is, yes, we like this idea, or this is what you have to do to think about making this viable. So it's more like they're coming to us and we're trying to help them. It's in that spirit.
Yeah, there are a couple of potential developers out there now who we've met with, who I would expect will be back this year or whenever we're sort of back in business.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Are we talked out?
Hold on, let me check. We still got 14 minutes left.
We could close early.
Yeah. I got a pressing question. Robert, how are you sitting outside and not getting devoured by mosquitoes?
I eat a lot of garlic.
Oh, Robert, what you need is a flashlight under your chin right now.
I want to track mosquitoes.
And I have a question for you too, Robert. When are you coming to see the mushrooms? I thought you were anxious.
Well, thank you, Deacon. I'll give you a buzz tomorrow and set it up. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Well, we have to close the hearing first, right?
Yeah.
Oh, good idea.
If no one has anything else to say, I move that we close all three of these hearings, which seem to have flowed together, tonight.
Do I hear a second?
One more, there's one more question here from Ashley.
Another question, I just want to say thank you to you on the planning board. Thank you for all the work you've done. Appreciate it. Good luck on Saturday. I'll be there.
Great.
Thank you for hanging with us.
Thank you.
A second.
Okay.
Take care, a second.
Okay, good, good. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think we got another 10 minutes we can use to discuss this.
Okay, well, okay, I'll call the roll. Michael?
Take care, aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Night all, see you Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Aye.
Night.
Aye.
What happened?
What happened?
Do we have?
They left and didn't adjourn the meeting. Okay, well, they adjourned the public hearing, so that's it, right?
It is it.
Okay.
We're turning into a pumpkin.
Okay. All right, I guess we're done. Okay?
Excellent.
Okay, I'm going to end the meeting. Good job, Deacon.
I don't know. I don't know.
And Steve muted himself, so I guess he, we can't thank him, or we can thank him, but, okay?
We will thank him.
Okay. All right. All right. That's it. End it, okay.